We will now begin the City of Boynton Beach City Commissioned Meeting today, Tuesday, June 19, 2018 at 6:30 PM. Would everyone please rise for invocation by Commissioner McCray, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Mayor Romulus?
Let us bow to the created make of all mankind. Heavenly Father, here we are once more again, asking for your guidance as we do another deliberation for this great city in which we live in. Father, as we look upon the TV and see America in crisis with the youth coming from another country, we have a lot to be thankful for just to have freedom ourselves, turn things around, make things right. And when we deliberate tonight, let us be mindful of what we say and how we say it. Why? Because we represent you in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Stephen Grant.
Here.
Vice Mayor Christina Romulus.
Present.
Commissioner Justin Katz.
Here.
Commissioner Mac McCray.
Here.
Commissioner Joe Casello. All present, Mayor.
All right. Any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve?
Delect.
I can.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, agenda is approved unanimously. Informational items by members of the City Commission. Commissioner Katz, would you like to begin?
I met with Andre Park from Saks at Kaplan regarding the Quantum Park Overlay Department District, and that is it.
Commissioner McCray?
Thank you, sir. I have no disclosure, but I have one announcement to make, and that is that our city manager is going on vacation. I well deserve one. Enjoy yourself, Lord. Thank you. I'm through.
Vice Mayor Romulus?
I also met with Andre Park of Saks at Kaplan regarding the Quantum Park Overlay District. That is all I have to disclose.
I have no disclosures, Mayor.
On June 6th, I attended our Veterans Event for D-Day. June 9th, I attended the Connect to Greatness Graduation. It is a nonprofit here in Boynton Beach that is looking for sixth graders for next year. On the 10th, I attended Troy's Barbecue's 22nd Anniversary. On the 11th, I attended My Brother's Keeper Event and did interviews with the three Police Chief Candidates Finalists. I was there for the meet and greet, and I'm very happy to please that we are through with the process and have selected Michael Gregory to be our next Police Chief. On the 12th, I attended the Transportation Planning Agency Steering Committee. 13th, I had a meeting with a Coffee with a Cop. On the 14th, I attended the Freeze Masons Meeting where they gave plaques to our Police Officer, Detective, Firefighter, and Paramedic of the Year. On the 18th, I attended the South Central Regional Waste Water Treatment Board. And today, I was at a press conference with Lois Frankel regarding the separation of children and parents for undocumented immigrants. I met with Channel 5 regarding our Panhandle ordinance, and I met with Rick Gonzalez from First Transit. And that is it. Any further announcements or information from the Board? Seeing none, moving on to announcements. Our first announcement is that the budget workshops and dates at the Intracoastal Park Clubhouse will be Monday, July 16, 2018 at 5:00 PM, Tuesday, July 17, 2018 at 10:00 AM, and if needed, Wednesday, July 18, 2018 at 2:00 PM. Next, we will move on to announcement from Commissioner Dave Kerner and Representative David Silvers. Are they here?
No, they're not here. Just go ahead.
Oh, that's just announce it. We'll be co-hosting a Hurricane Preparedness Workshop on June 26 from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Mid-County Senior Center, 3680 Lake Worth Road, Lake Worth, 33461. They are planning on having presentations by Palm Beach County Emergency Operations Center, the Solid Waste Authority, South Florida Water Management District, and the Lake Worth Drainage District. They also plan on having representation from the Red Cross, FPL, and other important partners. Announce the Fishing For fireworks.
Good evening. Mary DeGrefin Wright, Events and Program Manager. Now, I'm here to make an announcement about our Fourth of July event. The City of Boynton Beach proudly presents a patriotic celebration of our nation's Independence Day at Intracoastal Park Clubhouse on Wednesday, July 4. This year's exciting event will feature the sounds of the Paradigm Band. Come out and enjoy a variety of children and family activities, great food and beverages, and no Fourth of July event will be complete without a fantastic firework display. A great night for the whole family. The event is located at 2240 North Federal Highway, and that's at Intracoastal Park Clubhouse. The schedule includes a patriotic salute at 8:45 PM, followed by an amazing firework display that begins promptly at 9:00 PM. Immediately following the fireworks, the Paradigm Band will perform their second set until 10:30 PM. The city is providing free shuttle service for patrons parking at the Easyale Hester Community Center located at 1901 North Seacrest Boulevard. Shuttle service will begin at 5:30 PM until 8:30 PM and resume returns, drop-offs immediately after the fireworks display. Memories are made when families and friends and neighbors are able to fellowship together and enjoy a patriotic occasion filled with family activities, entertainment, and high-flying fireworks displays. This year's Fourth of July will definitely be an Independence Day to remember, and please remember to bring your lawn chairs. Thank you so much. I brought some additional flyers for anyone who requires additional information, and the flyers can be found on the back table. Thank you so much.
Mary, were there be food trucks and other vendors there?
Yes. KP Concessions is going to provide all the food and beverages this year.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Mary, do you have a talk, would you mind talking about the Last Play Date at Kids' Kingdom?
Nope.
On 129 East Ocean Avenue, June 30, 2018? Or is that at Eleanor's?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening. Alar Cressell, Marketing Director. Yes, we are having the Last Play Date at Kids' Kingdom on June 30 between 10 and 12. Mary and I are teaming up to do that together. We invite any families or children that would like to come and have the last hurrah of playing at the playground. And we'll have some goodies for the first 50 children that attend, and we welcome anybody. For more information, they can call 742-6010.
All right, thank you. And we also have this Saturday, June 23, at the Boynton Beach Mall Hurricane Expo and Touch a Truck from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. City staff will be helping you learn how to prepare, showing off our fire trucks, assisting you with evacuation routes, passing out handy magnets with ways to keep informed with hashtag Boynton Beach and more. P.S. There is always a chance you might win a To Go bag. We will have our interpreter present for our hard-of-hearing friends.
Yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I have a question. I think the weekend Saturday, we're there and even at the Civic Center downtown for the dance or something for those that, well, the only way that I found out about it was that the elderly at the Senior Center was telling me about it. I don't know who put the information out, but at least I heard about it.
That was a community effort from members of our community that arranged and planned that event. We assisted with opening the center and providing some PR and social media.
Thank you.
As well attended, I think 180 people came within the talk period.
Moving on to announcement by Career Source Palm Beach County about their youth programs by Holly Carson, Senior Director.
Good evening. How is everybody doing tonight?
Good.
My name is Holly Carson. I'm the Senior Director over at Career Source Palm Beach County for our training programs. First, I want to thank Commissioner McCray for saying a prayer for our youth. I think it's very much needed. So, Career Source, we do a lot of things there, but tonight I wanted to pitch our young adult programs because I've been finding more and more that our programs are not known here at the south end of the county. And so, my goal tonight is to let you know about our summer programs and hope that we can recruit some more Boynton youth to join our program. Just a little background, we serve young adults ages 17 to 24. Our sole mission of our program is to connect with out-of-school youth. So, these are young people that have dropped out of school. These are young people that have aged out of the foster care system. Some of them are single parents. We purposely engage young people in very low-income neighborhoods. That's one of the things that my career consultants do. They go out into neighborhoods, even in the evenings, and talk to young people and try to get them to come into our office. Because we find, once they come in and we pitch our program and they connect with one of our career coaches, we can usually get them to stay. So, we try to meet them where they are, and I'm always looking for suggestions on where we can find these young adults because I know they're not hanging out in libraries. So, we try to find them wherever they are, whether it be City Place or their own neighborhoods or, it's tough. So, we're always looking for suggestions, but right now, this year, our recruitment has been at an all-time high. We had over 400 people apply for our summer program. Unfortunately, because we're limited on funding, we can only serve 100. But we do still have slots right now for our hospitality training program, and I'm really hoping to get some leads tonight on some Boynton youth that we can serve. Our hospitality program is really, it's, the intent is to try to get young people involved in the hotel industry with the goal to get them employed there and also go to school at the same time. So, we're giving them industry certifications in the summer to work in the hotel, and then we offer them scholarships to go back to school at the same time. So, these young people are walking out of this program with industry certifications, and at the same time, we're connecting them with hotels in the county, and I'm talking about hotels like the Hyatts, the Hiltons, the Breakers. These are hotels that are ready and willing to invest in our young people. So, part of this program is we take them, we transport them for free to these hotels to do job shadowing days and meet some of the staff in the hotel and get to know them. And I can tell you that it works. This is the fifth year in a row that we're doing it. We have stellar staff that love what they do. We have great instructors. So, my call to action is hopefully that we can get some young people to apply to our program from Boynton. We also do year-round programs. So, if you know a young person that maybe isn't real motivated to get involved during the summer, starting in the fall, we offer year-round classes. And what we do, we have a five-week course for young people. Again, these are people that are, they're out of school. They don't know what they want to do. They're 19, they're 20, they have no job experience. Some of them don't even think they have the possibility to go to college. So, when they come in our doors, we give them that glimpse. We do college tours with them. We do community service with them. We actually pay them to go through the five-week career prep class, so we start to simulate the world of work. So, right away, they understand the value of a paycheck and they understand what it means to be on the job. So, we realize that an employer wants somebody who's ready and has those soft skills. So, Career Source spends the time with them upfront to train them and give them those soft skills, and then we introduce them to the employers that we have good working relationships with, and it works. I will tell you that we are placing youth in jobs. We are changing lives every day, and I'm so excited about this program. If you have suggestions on where we can recruit Boynton youth, I'm all ears. We also too, just so you know, any young person that joins onto our program, they get a career consultant paired with them for a year. They get support services like childcare paid for, bus passes, gas cards. As long as they're committed to our program and they want to change their life, we will take care of them, and we will open doors for them. So, is there any questions about our young adult training programs tonight?
You have to ask us.
I'm sorry, any questions?
That's all right. But thank you for informing the audience that is, you know, I know that Palm Beach, I mean, Career Source Palm Beach County does a lot of work. What is the phone number?
The main line to call is 561-340-1060, and the direct extension is 2351. That will be a live person that will answer the phone and talk to them about the program.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Any other questions from the Board? Seeing none, thank you, Holly.
I have one. You have flyers?
I actually sent Tim a flyer before the meeting, and I was thinking they were going to be printed out, but I can certainly send anything out via email that you need information on.
Okay. If, did you forward, can you forward that to all of us on the Commission?
Absolutely.
And then we will make sure to disseminate that information throughout the city.
Definitely. And if they want to just get online, a lot of our millennials just want to get online, it's careersourcepbc.com, and they can apply right online.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation on the update of Route Performance Maximization Presentation to be given by Clinton Forbes, Executive Director, and is Steve Anderson also here,
Good evening.
Evening.
Again, Clinton Forbes, the Executive Director of Palm Tran. It is a pleasure to be in your chambers and in your beautiful city tonight, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'd like to update you on the Palm Tran Route Performance Maximization Project. I'm joined with our interim Planning Manager, Steve Anderson, who will do the bulk of the presentation in terms of telling you some of the enhanced, talking to you about some of the enhancements in your community. But let me start by congratulating Mayor Grant, who today, the Palm Beach Board of County Commissioners approved his appointment to the Palm Tran Service Board. The Palm Tran Service Board is the board that has been delegated by the Board of County Commissioners to approve or disapprove all service changes in the county. So, we're excited to have you aboard, so congratulations.
Thank you.
You know, they took your mission statement down because we have our presentation up there, but it really, your mission statement is spot-on, and it really embodies the work that we are endeavoring in at Palm Tran. The Route Performance Maximization, before we get into the project, just want to tell you a little bit about our organization. Palm Tran is a mid-sized transit organization. We have 158 fixed route buses, which are the larger buses, 3,200 bus stops. We have nearly 9 million customers a year, about 35,000 a day. Just imagine that, 35,000 people a day use Palm Tran. And it's been about 22 years since we performed any type of major service change to the system. So, the Route Performance Maximization Project, it has several goals, and it's about really looking at the system comprehensively and maximizing the resources that the county gives us to provide the absolute best service for this community. Your organization, and I say your organization because not only does the Board of County Commissioners own Palm Tran, every tax-paying, gas-paying citizen and visitor of Palm Beach County is an owner. And so, you own Palm Tran, you own our system. And so, the goals are making the system more reliable, more direct service, improve frequency of the service, more convenient connections. Obviously, we want to attract customers to our, some new customers to our system by, you know, higher ridership. And a main goal is, again, utilizing the resources that are entrusted to Palm Tran to provide the absolute best service. So, we're not increasing the budget to redesign our bus network in Palm Beach County. We're utilizing existing resources. To operate Palm Tran in a year is $100 million. And so, we're going to take that $100 million, look at the inefficiencies and the unproductive service, take it out and reinvest it in the system to make the system much more palatable and more usable by this community. Improve customer amenities, and the future needs are clearly identified as part of RPM. Improve the reliability of buses. Streamline the routes for more direct service. So, I think Steve refers to it as unspegetting the system. We have a lot of circuitous routes in our system, and when you turn down in neighborhoods, which is good door-to-door service for some, time is money in transit, and it costs a lot to deviate into neighborhoods. When the service is more linear, more direct, it's more efficient. And so, we are straightening out the system, our entire bus network with the Route Performance Maximization Project. We're consolidating bus stops and improving frequency and span of service. Frequency builds ridership. One of our best bus routes is Route 1 that traverses US 1, and we have 20-minute service there. And so, that means that you don't really need a schedule to ride our system. You walk out to the bus stop, within 20 minutes, you can expect, or less, you can expect the bus to show up. That's the type of service we want to spread throughout our entire county and our entire bus network. So, again, span of bus service really means what time does the bus begin, the service begin, and what time does it end? Right now, we have inadequate span of service. We operate pretty early, but we'll get you to the mall and get you to your workplace, but we typically don't get you home because we close down too early. And so, we're looking at that and proving that as well with this initiative. And of course, this is, as I mentioned, that this is a community conversation. We want a robust conversation with the community, including the residents of Boynton, to give us feedback on our plan. So, this talk tonight is a part of that. It's a part of awareness to this community that things are going to change with our bus network, and they're going to change for the better. So, this essentially kind of summarizes where we are with some of the proposals and how our bus network will look once we implement this fall. So, we talked about frequency and frequency builds ridership. We have what we consider F service, level of service, 61 minutes or more. That means that the bus will come every 60 minutes, and if it breaks down or you miss it, you're waiting two hours or more. So, that's level of F service. That is not good service. Well, we currently have four routes with, you know, 70, 88-minute frequency. We are cutting that in half with the RPM proposal. 60-minute service is still not great service. We give that a D in terms of level of service. 21 of our routes currently have 60-minute service, which is not good. We reducing that by a third. 14 will have 60-minute service. Not great, but a major improvement. So, that's 44% of the network. 31 to 59 minutes, usually around 40 to 45 minutes, your bus will come. We rate that as a C. Here's a major improvement, from only two routes to eight routes, so 25% of the network. So, you could see the improvements that we are proposing with the RPM in a snapshot of essentially the service that would be available to the public. The outreach, I'll let Steve pick up with the outreach, but we want to make sure that the community is involved in this project. It is a, it will be a major change to our bus network in Palm Beach County, and so we are, you know, really stomping the pavement, getting out in the community at our bus stops, letting the folks know about these enhancements to our network. So, Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to address you, and we will be available for questions, and I'll allow Steve to pick up where I left off.
Thank you, Clinton. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, City of Boynton Beach, it's truly better in Boynton over the period of time, the last three months that we have been doing outreach in your community. We've seen that. We had a really good turnout, May 8 at Carolyn Sims Center, where we did engage in some transit discourse with the folks that were there. We've received over 1,400 surveys, we're also online, and the general consensus is, as Clinton said, that we don't run enough late service. I mean, we have routes that stop at 6:00 and 7:00 o'clock. You know, we're a bigger city than that. We're a bigger metro area than that, and certainly you wouldn't see that as much as in Broward or Dade. In addition, you know, easier fare payment. I'm sure some of you, when you go out of town and use other transit systems, they have different fare cards that are available. We're still in the works of developing a much better fare payment system to not only move us around on our buses, but also interact with Tri-Rail Miami-Dade and Broward County Transit. And more convenient transfers. You know, when you have 60-minute frequency and you're waiting 58 minutes for that bus, then when you finally catch it and you get to your destination, not all of our people have a one-seat ride. Some of them are looking to actually catch another bus. If that bus is pulling away just as you're pulling up, then that's more added wait time, and it will discourage you from using transit. So, we're delivering some results. Now, it won't be complete unicorns popping out of birthday cakes, but we're, as we showed earlier, we are moving the needle in terms of frequency. In addition, there will be more span of service. Now, span of service is hugely important, especially to our existing riders. In Boynton Beach, you all are centrally located between West Palm and Boynton, so you have large employment at West Palm and Boca, so you all are kind of in the middle to be able to access both job markets. But again, if we can get you there and can't get you home, then you may use Uber or have to rely on a friend, and it may impact your ability to have that job outside of the city. More destinations. We know that we need to service other areas, Hypoluxo Road, for example, or Jog Road. These are things that we may not be able to get to in this phase of RPM, but we'll continue to engage with you to really identify those needs. So, this is our current network. I'm not going to turn y'all into transit planners in a five-minute segment, but our system's pretty easy to follow. Route 1 is on US 1. Route 2 serves Congress. Route 3 is on Military. Those routes have pretty good frequency. The key for us is making those east-west connections, making sure that those feeder routes feed into the main lines, and we're happy to say that we have an improvement to share with you, that the Boynton Beach Route, Route 73, which is the bottom kind of magenta line, we're proposing to extend that to the Tri-Rail Station. This is huge for the mall patrons, Leisureville, Bethesda West, people that may either use the rail system or live in the, I believe it's the Village Royale area on East Gateway. We think that area could really garner us some transit ridership. You know, we see a lot of people using their bikes and walking in that segment between US 1 and Seacrest, so we're really excited about that. In addition, Route 2, which is Congress Avenue, it's our second most popular route, that route will have 45-minute service on Saturday. There's a lot of retail. You know, I used to live in Boynton. I live in Delray now. I still go to Boynton to shop. They've got the best retail basically in South County. So, we want to do a better job of complementing the retail and the service industry work that is trying to get home later in the evening. In addition, a little further north to you, we will be introducing an extended Lantana Road Route that will go up to Jog and Forest Hill. Now, these are not major changes, but with a zero net sum budget, we feel like we're taking steps in the right direction, and this isn't your grandfather's Palm Tran. It's a new day at Palm Tran, and we're excited to work with you. So, we'll have more outreach events in your city in the next couple of months. This is a schedule that will lend itself to a new system, September 30. We're excited about it. That's when the lights go on. But between then and now, we have a fair share of work and outreach and engagement to do with you all. So, that concludes our presentation. We'll hold for comment, or I'll pass out business cards or whatever we can do to move forward. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, do you commend you, Mr. Forbes, and I forget your name, I'm sorry. Mr. Anderson, thank you so much for the effort that you're doing to improve the ridership here in Palm Beach County. It's an effort as we here in the city try to move towards a more pedestrian-friendly downtown. This will also help to coordinate that trajectory, so thank you for the effort that you're making, and I can truly see how this will help improve the ridership in our city and also in our county. help improve the ridership in our city and also in our county in the future. So, thank you very much.
I have one comment, and that is that with the future gen items we have on the trolley, so maybe this could tie in when you get down there.
Yeah.
Mayor, thank you, since that's yours. Thank you. Talk about it later.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next, we have a few announcements, proclamations. So, the first proclamation that we have is for June 27, 2018, as National HIV Testing Day. Would Wisney Marcellus or Ludney Emile please come down for the acceptance of the proclamation?
City of Boynton Beach proclamation. Whereas in the United States, over 1 million people are living with HIV, and every 12 minutes, a new infection occurs yielding more than 40,000 annual new HIV infections. And whereas in Florida, more than 114,700 people are living with HIV, and more than 13 new infections occur daily, and 1 in 8 HIV-infected individuals don't know they are infected. And whereas in Palm Beach County, more than 8,200 people or 1 in 170 residents are living with HIV. And whereas an individual's behavior, not race or ethnicity or sexual orientation, puts him or her at risk of HIV infection. And whereas new treatments are bringing hope and enhancing the quality of life for those who are affected. However, these considerable advances can only be help, can only help individuals if they know their HIV status. Now, therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim the 27th of June 2018 as National HIV Testing Day.
You have someone taking pictures? All right. Okay. Would you like to say a few words?
Hello, everyone. My name is Nini Emile, and I am here on behalf of Found Care. I just would like to encourage everyone to get tested on June 27. We're recognizing that day as National HIV Testing Day, and I think it's very important that we spread that with the youth. If you have any questions, feel free to ask me at the end. Thank you.
I have one.
Yes.
In Broward County, they have vans that go out? You all have vans?
We do not provide vans, but we do have testing Monday through Saturday. We have four locations. I'm in the Boynton Beach location. We relocated from Delray. Our address is 1901 South Congress Avenue, and our main location is 2300 South Congress Avenue. Again, you can get tested Monday through Saturday. It's free. It takes 20 minutes to get your test results, and we also provide free hepatitis C testing as well.
Thank you.
Next, proclaim June as Pride Month. Julie Seaver of Compass GLCC and Meredith Ochman of PBC HRC will be present to accept the proclamation. And Alan Hendricks. City of Boynton Beach proclamation. Whereas the lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender community is comprised of people from all walks of life who are active participants in our community. And whereas members of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender community are engaged in endeavors of economic growth, retail, education, hospitality, community, professional, and service industries. And whereas, the City of Boynton Beach has a proud history of striving for equal opportunity for all of its residents and employees. And whereas people seeking to limit any rights of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender community are in conflict with the city's policies and anti-discrimination ordinances. Now, therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim the month of June 2018 as LGBTQ Pride Month.
You have someone taking pictures?
Yes.
Okay.
We have a photographer.
Thank you, Mayor Grant, Commissioners, Lori, staff, fellow residents. I'm very proud of Boynton Beach. Boynton Beach is a diverse city, and in that diversity is our strength. And everything we can do to build community in our city is a plus for our city. I have next to me Julie Seaver. She is the interim Director of Compass Community Center, Compass Gay and Lesbian Community Center of Palm Beach County. And next to her is my friend Meredith Ochman, who is a board member of Palm Beach County HRC Human Rights Council. I volunteer coordinate for a group called Equality Florida. It's a statewide organization, and in our, we have over 3,000 supporters in Boynton Beach. People have trusted us with their email addresses and phone numbers and addresses. So, I appreciate and I'm grateful for your vision and for a very clear statement that says, "We are a community. We embrace everybody that's in our city." I think that is, I think it's commendable, and I think it's the right thing to do, and I'm very excited about the direction our city is going. I believe that the difference between a good city and a great city is community. So, we thank you tonight. Thanks.
My pleasure.
And the last proclamation for June 19, 2018, is Lifeguard Appreciation Day. City of Boynton Beach proclamation. Whereas the number-one cause of drowning in both Palm Beach County in the U.S. is unsupervised water activity. Lifeguards play an invaluable role in drowning prevention and water safety through their specialized training to identify persons in distress in the water and provide first responder help. Whereas, most drownings occur at unguarded sites, according to the Center for Disease Control and Injury Center. If a lifeguard is present, the chance of drowning at a beach is less than 1 in 18 million per year, as reported by the United States Life Saving Association. Whereas, lifeguard surveillance is essential to a swimming facility's risk management program. By enforcing the rules and monitoring patrons, action can be taken to prevent or minimize aquatic injuries. Whereas, lifeguards certified as water safety instructors are trained to provide comprehensive swim instruction to all age groups. Participating in formal swim lessons reduces the risk of drowning among children aged 1 to 4 years, the population with the highest drowning rates. Now, therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim the 21st of June 2018 as Lifeguard Appreciation Day.
He's taking pictures. Yep. There we go.
I do want to say thank you today for this proclamation. Lifeguards have such an important role in water safety, and they are key to preventing drownings. All the training it takes to become a lifeguard and the training it takes for them to continue their certifications, it means a lot to me and my lifeguards, and their hard work goes greatly appreciated. So, thank you, guys. And, oh, I'm sorry. My name is Crystal Kaisada, and I am the Aquatic Supervisor. And I want to thank Wally, Amy, and Allison as well for always supporting my ideas and definitely helping me with my first proclamation. Thank you.
Don't go. I have a question. Don't leave. I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I need to know how many lifeguards are employed here in the City of Boynton, both part-time and full-time, whether the ocean or wherever? How many we have on duty?
At the pool? Yeah, at the pool. I have a senior lifeguard, four lifeguards, and myself.
Somebody tell me how many are employed at the ocean?
The ocean lifeguards, there are a beach chief, two lieutenants, four full-time lifeguards, and then numerous part-time lifeguards on call, seasonals, depending on the beach usage.
Give me a number, Amy.
About eight, correct?
Thank you. When I ask for a number, please give me a number. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. All right. Seeing no more announcements, moving on to public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to three-minute presentations. I'm aware that we have some few first-time speakers, so we will allow for extra time for them.
Good evening, City Manager, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Sonny Garcia. I reside at 1631 Old West Third Lane. I'm here to introduce the coach of the Boynton United FC Soccer Academy U-15 team, Jaime Cano. And part of his team, they're trying to raise some money to go to Portugal to win a championship trophy for Boynton Beach. They're representing Boynton Beach in Portugal. They're looking for donations. Anybody that wants to donate money, the coach will give you his number. Anybody in the audience wants to donate money? These kids are going down there to represent Boynton Beach, like I said, in Portugal. Ouscan.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for your time. We are a John Soccer Club, Boy United. We win VIP Figo tournament, and we allowed to go back to Portugal to defeat our trophy. I'd love to give to these kids some of the experience to play overseas. We've done it before, and we went, we played the champion two years ago from South America. And, you know, we're trying to recruit some help for uniforms and equipment, a lot of specs. We, I know we have a lot of expenses. We are a nonprofit organization, and we are one of the smallest clubs around in Boynton. So, any help we, you guys can give to us, we appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
What is your number?
Our number is 561-714-8764.
8764?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you so much.
I'll ask if you can please email your requests to our City Manager or just one of us, so we can have that information, writing in also the name of your nonprofit. That would help us in also distributing the information to help you get funding.
So, if you could speak with Eleanor in the back to get all of our information, we can move forward with helping you out.
Mayor, right. Before you leave, you told us that you all will be going to play, but you didn't say when you'll be going to play?
Oh, we live in, I'm sorry about that. We live in June 1, and we come in about the 10.
June 1 is gone.
I mean, July 1.
Thank you. Okay. Don't be nervous.
First time.
Let me just tell you and Mr. Garcia, I'm just saying you probably need to reach out to the Boynton Beach Chamber of Commerce, our business, you know, community here, and see if they want to give donations as well. I'm just saying that, you know, call the Boynton Beach Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you for the information. Thank you.
On our journey to Portugal.
Thank you.
Love.
Minister Bernard Wright, CEO of Bernard Wright Ministries, the Robbie Wales Foundation, and Real Talk Radio. And the radio station is back on, to God be the glory. I want to thank everybody who are attending in here tonight. God bless you all. God bless you all on the dials, in a spirit of humility and in a spirit of giving. It seems like that we all need. Well, let me just read something into the records, and I'd like to give something for the records. To whom it may concern, Boynton United in fellowship with Bernard Wright Ministries, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and the charity here, a community, are asking for your support to help provide a free summer camp for the underprivileged children who cannot afford the exorbitant cost of $578 per child to attend the summer camp at the Carolyn Sims Center. This summer camp, which has been depriving the children unjustly of free access to this public recreation facility for the past eight years, subjects the community and neighborhood children to the negative elements of the streets. In an effort to provide a free summer camp for the children, we are pooling our resources to provide a safe and productive environment throughout the summer by providing them positive mentoring, athletics, free swim lessons, healthy meals for breakfast and lunch, and snacks, outings to local education facilities, reading programs, and caring supervision. Where there's needed, there's ongoing donations of water, sugar-free juices, snacks, napkins, cups, plastic flatware bread, and food for sandwiches, food for breakfasts, fruit, and any financial donations in support hereof. We are pooling our support to provide these children a great summer experience they will always remember. We thank you so very much in advance, in whatever way you can support us, with warm regards, sincerely, Minister Bernard Wright of Bernard Wright Ministries. I'd like to hand each and every one of you all a copy of this at this point in time. Thank you. Thus far, we have the Boynton Beach Coalition of Clergy and the Heart of Boynton Beach, and there are several others who are committing themselves. Well, what we need is manpower. We need those who are responsible that will spend from 7:00 to 5:00 o'clock. I'm one who will be there from 7:00 to 5:00. So, we're asking for your presence, your labor, your energy, and respect. In the next five weeks, we're starting this summer camp Monday. We thank for the police department, who are also contributing. If there's something from that funding there, we ask that you will help us in that respect. We have bats, balls. We're going to start these children to learn how to play baseball this year. We got gloves. We're asking for about 20 gloves. And we're going to develop these children, as I've seen them develop, from Peewee, then know nothing about ball. So, we have that in mind. We are trusting and in faith with about 40 children, but we'll take three and work with them. But that's where we are, and we're asking for your focus on this, and thank you for any effort that you all give and support thereof. Thank you. God bless you, and have a great night.
Excuse me. Anything that we give, what will we drop it off at? What will we give it?
Oh, well, there's an address, there's emailed out to me, but I don't have J. phone number, but you can contact me, and I can give you three or four other numbers that might be convenient for wherever in that area, but...
All right. If we drop them off here at City Hall, somebody pick them up?
Yes, no doubt about it.
Okay.
By all means.
If we all need a drop off.
And thank you so very much.
Yes, I'm themed in green tonight. Susan Oyer, 140 South East, 27th Way. I've been coming to you guys for a few years now, suggesting ordinances and things we can do to make the environment better. So, now I've condensed it all down onto front and back of one sheet of paper with some highlights, knowing that a lot of people actually watch these commission minutes on their cable, and they come to me regularly, so I figure I will share some of these, because I get a positive response, and maybe you'll note that, you know, a lot of people in this city are interested in these things. First of all, we need to ban plastic straws, metal straws, paper straws. They are an option nationwide. There's a big push to get rid of plastic straws. We can easily brand paper or metal straws and sell them or give them out at city events, as well as the CRA, as well as any businesses. Banning Styrofoam, it takes over a million years, scientists have found, for Styrofoam to break down in the environment. There's no reason to have it anymore as far as in restaurants, you know, to pack up your food. Some of the restaurants have converted to paper packaging a long time ago, and if you've ever been to Burger-Fy, they have a nice corrugated paper packaging. I want to aim for a charge for plastic bags. There is a ban on plastic bags around the world, several countries, and I've got a whole list here for you. According to study.com, it takes a trillion, there's a trillion plastic bags produced each year. They do not decompose because they're made out of whatever, they're polyethylene that does not biodegrade. So, I, they've found actually that it's much more effective to charge people a tax or a surcharge to eliminate or reduce the amount of bags than it is to actually ban these bags. So, that would be my suggestion. It's a great moneymaker for the city, yay. Revenue source, can I say that again? Revenue source, City of Boynton. Chicago did it. They charged an extra seven cents, and they have made millions of dollars off of the plastic bag surcharge. Now, obviously, that only works the first year till everybody gets wise and starts cutting back, but it would be a revenue stream for the city. You can read my other ones on here, because, man, this three minutes goes really super fast. And I will finish up by saying, please consider my idea to add electric car charging stations to every public space and every new building that we're putting in in the city. They're expecting the amount of electric cars... for Styrofoam to break down in the environment. There's no reason to have it anymore, as far as in restaurants, you know, to pack up your food. Some of the restaurants have converted to paper packaging a long time ago, and if you've ever been to Burger-Five, they have a nice corrugated paper packaging. I want to aim for a charge for plastic bags. There is a ban on plastic bags around the world, several countries, and I've got a whole list here for you. According to study.com, it takes a trillion, there's a trillion plastic bags produced each year. They do not decompose because they're made out of whatever they're, polyethylene that does not biodegrade. So I, they've found, actually, that it's much more effective to charge people a tax or a surcharge to eliminate or reduce the amount of bags than it is to actually ban these bags. So that would be my suggestion. It's a great moneymaker for the city, yay. Revenue Source, can I say that again? Revenue Source, City of Boynton. Chicago did it. They charged an extra seven cents, and they have made millions of dollars off of the plastic bag surcharge. Now, obviously, that only works the first year till everybody gets wise and starts cutting back, but it would be a revenue stream for the city. You can read my other ones on here, because, man, this three minutes goes really super fast. And I will finish up by saying, please consider my idea to add electric car charging stations to every public space and every new building that we're putting in in the city. They're expecting the amount of electric cars to go up massively, according to the paper last week, massively. Was it like 10, 20, was it 24% increase every year for the next 10, 12 years? So obviously, there's going to be electric cars everywhere, and we need to be out at the forefront of this and providing a place for these people to park, especially if we want them to buy them. And I will stop talking now. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Commission. My name is Mette Gray. I'm the founder of GBDC Entrepreneurship Institute, and I'm here tonight to express gratitude and thank you for your continuous support over the years. I was able to pick up a check from our police department. Is Acting Chief Kelly here? I want to say thank you to the chief and the prior chief, and the chief before that, I've been around a while, for supporting the work I do in the community. Just as a bit of an update, I think because I've brought in front of you over the years my youth to show the impact that I'm making in the community with our youth, I think I have neglected to put forward the fact that we're, in fact, a business incubator. We develop existing small businesses. We help entrepreneurs bring their ideas from concept to implementation. We also provide backend support and assistance with business plan development and funding. So I think we, our mission has gotten lost a little bit because I do tend to be more passionate about the youth than the adults. So that is quite my fault. We are located here in Boynton Beach. Our working address is 1500 Gateway Boulevard. But we are transitioning from a bricks-and-mortar office to a mobile office. And I wish Mr. Forbes had stayed because for the past two and a half years, I worked with Palm Tran, the county manager, and Mr. Forbes to actually acquire a Palm Tran bus that we're in the process of retrofitting into a mobile incubator. This bus is designed to go into the community and work with existing organizations. So if you are looking to expand your mission by adding counseling, business development, entrepreneurship training, mentoring, this bus will be able and available to help you do that. It is a 40-foot bus. I've already had 20 computers donated from a local bank and software and equipment. We are partnering with Habitat for Humanity, and we'll be building out the bus in two weekend phases. So this bus is designed to further even the city's mission for financial literacy and wealth building. There is that group in the community who are not able to find jobs, so entrepreneurship for creating jobs. There are homeless folks in the community who don't have an address. They will have a cloud account, and our young people will be able to also come on and get assistance with homework, resume writing, and life skills development. So we are a total solutions business and business development incubator. Once again, I do thank you for your support. The bus will be funded and kept running by advertising on the side of the bus. So if you're a business owner, you want additional exposure for your business and help a good cause, we'll be selling advertising on the side of the bus. And once again, thank you for your support. Have a great night.
And that, is there some social media that you have so we can follow this? Should I ask that for you?
www.gbdcei.org, that is our website. And GBDC Entrepreneurship Institute is our Facebook, and it is our Twitter account, and you can also reach me as well. Our phone number is 561-894-4510. Info@gbdcei.com is our email. Thanks again.
Harpside 1711 Woodford, Boynton Beach. This Saturday, there's going to be a cert program. The Boynton Beach Mall starts at about 10:30 through about 4:00 o'clock. I hope somebody, some people from the dais could step up and support us. The other thing is, with the new police chief, I still believe that there should have been growth from within. I still believe there was enough people within the department to step into being a police chief. That's just the way it is. I believe we had enough quality. On another situation, there is no North Korea deal. Oh, and let me explain that. If there were a deal, you are spreading Trump propaganda. A deal has terms, requirements, dates, numbers, specific consequences for violations of the deal. So let's be honest about it. He was outfoxed by the North Korean guy. We got nothing in return. Also, what's happening down on the border with these kids, it's a shame. It's criminal, what he's doing, putting these kids. Where are these kids, and a lot of the kids that are going to just disappear? It's wrong what they're doing, and the Republicans in the House and the Senate, they're complicit. They are complicit. And let's be honest about it. He's a dictator, he's a fascist, and he's following what was done in the '30s. And I hope people here wake up with the elections coming up in November. Let's wake up and put something to bed. Thank you.
Seeing no more public comments, moving on to administrative. So the first item is to authorize the City Commissioners to travel and hotel stay for the National League of Cities Annual Conference at the Los Angeles Convention Center in Los Angeles, November 7th to 10th, 2018. Yes, Commissioner McCray?
I need to know who's going for representation from this city?
I would like to go. I represented the city last year over in Charlotte. I am one on their policy committees. I was up there in DC for the Congressional Center. I do, however, disagree with the city's estimate regarding the whole cost of $3,000. I found out that if you stay at a local Airbnb, you save about $100 a night. And I'd also would say that I'm going to pay for my own flight there and back because I may stay an extra day or so. And so I would be asking for $1,500 instead of the $3,000.
Take a motion in that form, Mayor, that we nominate you to go to California.
Or takers first.
Yes.
I don't want to go home, just seeing. I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next, point-eligible members to the community to serve in vacant positions on city advisory boards.
And?
We have none. The opening spots, we have two on the Arts Commission. We have four on the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals, one on the Employee Pension Board, one on the Historic Resource Preservation Board, and one on the Senior Advisory Board, or two on the Senior Advisory Board. Moving on to consent agenda. Would anyone like to remove an item on the consent agenda?
Like to pull K.
All right.
I'd also like to pull a minutes.
Any other items to be pulled? Seeing none. Commissioner McCray, would you like to begin with item K?
Right. Thank you. The one that I pulled, and the reason I pulled it was the one that has to do with public works. And I just want to say to staff, as well as this city, for the flooding that has been taking place in public works for as long as I can remember, this is long overdue. It's given to a local contract, and I just want to tell you all, thank you for stepping up to the plate and doing what's right for those that work over there. I'd like to offer a motion to approve.
Any discussion, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Vice Mayor Romulus, item M?
Yes, pulling item M. I did send this information to Quinester in the city clerk's office, but the corrections on the firefighter's name that I mentioned during my informational comments, his last name is Lemieux, L-E-M-I-E-U-X, Lemieux. And then the individual who spoke during public audience, his name is Guarn Sims, G-U-A-R-N, not Warren. So that's my correction. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion for the remainder of the consent agenda?
So move.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to public hearing. The City Commission will conduct these public hearings in its dual capacity as local planning agency and city commission. Proposed ordinance number 18-010. Shawna, would you like to begin?
An ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending Land Development Regulations Chapter 3, Zoning, Article 4, Use Regulations, Section 3D, Use Matrix and Notes, to increase eligible locations for gas station siting in appropriate areas of the city, providing for conflict, separability, codification, and an effective date.
This is a city-initiated ordinance. Michael, would you like to give us some information?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike Rumpf, interim development director. If I could have the slideshow brought up? Thank you. This is one of several proposed by staff city-initiated amendments to our land development regulations. This is placed on the agenda tonight. The way you see it before, some of the privately initiated items are before you are heard because an aspect or aspects of it is prerequisite to the approval or consideration of the Wawa gas station. You recall, this is essentially a continuation of a study that was conducted in 2015. A little bit of background. Findings then, one half the gas stations were legally non-conforming. The LDRs were amended. 16 became conforming. That leaves two continually on our non-conforming list. If those stations were damaged beyond a certain percent, they cannot be rebuilt. No new stations have been constructed. It's also notable that none of them meet the minimum frontage requirement of, I'm sorry, about half of them, 10, meet the area requirement. None of them meet the 225 minimum frontage requirements. I'm going to get to those standards later, but these are just notable facts. I'd also point out some service voids within the city. Basically, some thought process or thinking points that were considered at the onset of the analysis. Obviously, should additional stations be accommodated? Where, what are the impacts within the city? If I touch upon any of these points too quickly, please slow me down. Current analysis, considerations, obviously, at, really, Hurricane Irma is not too far off in the past, and we still recall some experience, and it brings back memories from prior hurricanes which may have been more significant in our waiting lines and gas stations being out of fuel during a certain period of time. We consider whether the changes would result in a proliferation of gas stations within certain areas of the city or throughout the city. Of course, what is the impact upon project design, or if there's any reduced safety? Benefits from additional gas stations, obviously contributes towards shortages during major storm events. Notable that 50%, fact, I found 50% of the gas stations in the Tampa-St. Pete area were out of fuel in advance of the landfall of Irma, and 65% in the Fort Lauderdale, Miami area were out of fuel again before landfall of Hurricane Irma. Interesting. Proposed changes in the findings, basically threefold. We currently have the standard in our regulations that restricts intersections of a certain class. That means size of road and intensity to a maximum of two. The proposed change would increase that to a maximum of three. Of course, these are limited to the higher-class roadways. Eliminates the minimum frontage requirement, which all the stations do not comply with anyway. It omits the minimum driveway separation distance between it and adjoining property boundary. The staff report goes on to explain that our engineering standards address most site design aspects such as that, and what staff does not find necessary to have particular standard only applicable to gas station design. Really, the results here are simple. It really, with the developed nature of most properties at intersections, there's minimal impact. So it really does control citywide impacts. The increase in gas station and future possible siting locations are slightly increased, namely, if you approve the Wawa station where it's proposed. And of course, site plan review remains required in all of these instances where additional stations may be allowed. This is a map which indicates the roadway classes that are being addressed. The roadway classes that we're dealing with are shown on the functional classification. That's a higher classification, Arturo roadway, namely Congress Avenue and I-95. That really concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay. One of the questions I have regarding, do we look, do the city look into electric charging stations, or supercharging stations? I know that Tesla has that. Is that something that we can foresee in the future that is compliant with our new gas station ordinances?
You could clarify what you're asking.
So Tesla has supercharging stations that where you can charge your battery in a rapid amount of time. Is this something that was considered regarding, you know, future, you know, electric vehicles may have a supercharging station?
I think our sustainability coordinator would really lead our charge in reviewing our regulations. I know on a case-by-case basis, we've been asking for more charging stations. I doubt very much those are the superstations. I think there's either the class or group, class, depending upon how long it takes to actually charge, the amount of power that's provided to those locations, like the city station, correct me if I'm wrong, Group 2, Group 1? Yeah. That's a Type 2, a charging station. So I'm sure we'll be considering that. That has not been done in conjunction with this study, but I'm sure we're going to be looking into that, whether our LDRs need to be amended to require those in more circumstances.
Okay, yes.
Mike, this will have backup generated power, obviously?
What is required of all these stations these days is that they are what's called generator-ready. That means a generator is brought onsite, and it's basically plug-and-play. Now, whether they do, that's going to be up to them, whether they have something onsite, but I believe it's going to be ready for it, like all are required to. And I should say required to. During our last study, I looked into that, and it's only within your, only those stations required to have such provisions if they're within a certain proximity to a major intersection or the evacuation routes. This would be one of those.
So they'd be required to have it?
They will be required to be generator-ready, not necessarily have a generator onsite.
Okay, I'm a little confused. Generator-ready, does that mean they have to physically go somewhere and get a generator and bring it onsite?
Yes, but it will, yes, that's true, but they will have all the electrical wiring and hookup capable, so they don't have to do any retrofit in advance to easily plug it in, activate it, and it completely fuels the operation.
That's the plan for Wawa?
But we'll ask that later.
That's what we understand, yes.
I guess, do we have minimum requirements for the generator, for it to be generator-ready?
We don't. Not per se. I mean, we'll have, in order to do that, yes, we're going to permit the electrical equipment, but I don't know if we necessarily have stated in our books what it needs to have if it's generator-ready.
Okay. Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. My concern is, with the passing of this, will this affect present gas stations that's already operating?
It will not reduce nonconformities. It's going to increase conformities of existing stations.
So if a station that's already in existence, like the Shell, if that blows down the hurricane, God forbid, it will be able to rebuild?
If anything, yes. It does not increase the number of nonconforming stations now.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion from the board? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve?
So move.
May I have a roll call, please?
Hello?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Absent.
Ray?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Romulus, for those 4-0.
Proposed ordinance number 18-011, and proposed ordinance number 18-012. Shawna?
An ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending ordinance 89-38 by amending the future land use elements of the comprehensive plan for property commonly known as Wawa and described herein, owned by Boynton Hart Institute LLC, PNC Bank, N.A., changing the land use designation from office commercial to local retail commercial, providing for conflicts, separability, and an effective date. The second ordinance is an ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending ordinance 02-013... ordinance zero-two dash zero-one-three to rezonate parcel of land described herein and commonly referred to as Wawa from C-one office professional to C-three community commercial, providing for conflicts, separability, and an effective date.
Do you need to swear anybody and who's speaking?
All right. Do you swear or affirm that your testimony will be true? Thank you.
I guess Bonnie Miskel, would you please present your case?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, Bonnie Miskel here on behalf of the applicant. Thank you very much for allowing us to speak today. I became, I encountered my first Wawa experience twelve years ago on my way to dropping my daughter off at college. My husband had found this spot that he wanted to stop for food. I was extremely hungry. We waited an hour to get there, and then he pulled up to a gas station. You can imagine my surprise. I looked at him like he was nuts, and to quote my kids, I was absolutely hangry at the time. But after walking in the store and actually ordering my sandwich, it became our ritual, and we did it for four years. If she had graduated in five, I think I would have been okay. But, and I have been trying ever since to get them to come to Florida. So when they landed on our doorstep at our office in Boca Raton, I was delighted, I was, I'm their biggest cheerleader, and I'm very, very excited to present this to you, to give you a sense of, you know, and I know there are a lot of people from New Jersey and New York and Pennsylvania and the mid-Atlantic region, and we have some of our fans out there in the audience. It is, it's almost a cult, and I say that in the nicest of ways, because once you become a fan, you're always a fan, and you're never disappointed, and you wear your T-shirts and your caps, and you, if you're lucky, you grab bags of coffee when they offer it to you. So it's a very, very special experience, and I, and I think you're just going to love it. So I'm very proud to present this this evening. So the Wawa is, we have a number of applications that are on the agenda. Let's see, why is this not moving? Okay. Oops. I just went to.
Bonnie, will you also be discussing item E? Or is that?
Well, we've actually consolidated for purposes of presentation, if that, with your permission, if that's acceptable, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I believe that we have to wait till the second meeting to discuss it, but item E, approved Wawa gas station conditional use and major site plan modification request to construct a gas station to include a six thousand one hundred nineteen square foot convenience store, a seven thousand eight hundred thirty square foot canopy over nine pump islands and related site improvements.
Okay, then what we'll do is we'll very generally talk about it, but without going into a lot of detail. Okay, so, all right, here we go again. Okay, now we're going to skip over that. So the application, the applications that are before you this evening, we have a future land use amendment request from office commercial OC to local retail commercial. And if you look at your map, this is, the subject property is the northeast corner of the intersection of Congress and Woolbright, and with the exception of that inner, the corner, the northeast corner, everything else is local retail commercial. Your staff report, by the way, is extremely thorough, and they go into some of the proposals that are going on further north. This makes the entire intersection consistent, so that's our first request. Our second request, okay, is the companion request to rezone the property from its existing zoning category of C-one, which is primarily an office category, which exists out there today, to C-three. And again, this is consistent with your land use surrounding, it's consistent with your land use plan designation, it's also consistent with the zoning districts on the other three corners of the intersection, so that this entire intersection, should you agree with us, will end up becoming C-three. Okay. This is what the map will look like. And then the next item and the site plan modification are for another day, so we won't go into it in great detail. But this is consistent with the text amendment that you have just moved forward, the request is consistent, we will not exceed the three gas station maximum, and it is consistent with the other two text amendments that were corresponding. I have more if you wish us to go into the details of the, of the map itself. I'd also like to speak to and respond to Commissioner Casello's question about being generator ready, if appropriate, and again, Mr. Mayor, you'll let me know whether, okay. So what Wawa has done throughout the state is they have a contract with a generator company, and their, the terms of that contract are, within twelve hours of the end of the storm event, that generator will be on property, on the particular stations that need the hookup, and will be plugged in in order to serve the community. So obviously, they have to wait until the storm event ends, but then the trucks roll in, and the terms are within twelve hours of the end of the term of, of the storm event.
Thank you for clarifying. I thought maybe they were going to go down the road down to Home Depot and.
And get ten of them and hook them in. No, it's, it's a mega generator that they, that they bring in from outside the area, and they have this contract across the state. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have if the public gets up and they want more details about the Wawa. We're also happy to answer that. I would like to add that we have met with the residential community to the north of the property on three occasions. We were very pleasantly surprised on the first meeting, where about thirty members of that community came in with red shirts on, and it was the good red, it was the Wawa red. So I'm, we're available to answer any, any questions that you may have.
All right. Commissioner McCray?
Thank you, Bonnie. I'm glad you said that they came in with red shirts on. I did receive one email from one resident that said, not another gas station, but I only received one. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
Further discussion from the board? I'll open it up to the audience. Seeing none, may have a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, may have a, yep.
I just want to comment that this is a rarity for me to see so many members of the audience excited about, about an agenda item, people clapping it up and T-shirts. It's really awesome, so this is, this is entertaining for me. I just wanted to comment on that.
We're going to wait for Commissioner Katz to get sit down. So Commissioner Katz, to get you updated, we have a motion as second for the approval of the future land use map for Wawa, ordinance number eighteen dash zero eleven, eighteen dash zero twelve. Did you have any questions for the applicant?
No, I think, I'd kind of spoken at length with, with the parties involved when they were scouting sites, you know, going back a year's time or so, and since it's in District One, they've, they've been pretty open in, in speaking to me on a regular basis. I grew up in South Jersey, so there's a Wawa every, every seventy-five yards. It's just, it's, if all businesses operated and treated their employees like Wawa did, then you wouldn't have the issues we have in this country with regards to, you know, workers being underpaid and, and underbenefited. It's just, you know, Wawa's a premier organization, and they take care of their customers, and they take care of employees, so I'm excited to have them in the city.
I think Commissioner Katz is auditioning for a.
He wants a T-shirt.
He wants, he wants a deal. He wants an endorsement deal.
I want to get one of those pinkies.
They're just, normally I don't speak above and beyond the minimum amount of words I feel I need to to convey my point, but I'll tell a quick story.
Oh, boy.
That in two thousand eight, the Philadelphia Phillies went to the World Series, and I went home to, to go to the World Series and, and watch it with family and all that, and they had all these, when Wawa, you know, when there's big sporting events in the city, they put up signs that have, you know, the local sports teams on their stuff, so it's, you know, pictures of Hoagies with the Phillies or the Eagles and all that stuff. And after the World Series is over and they won, I like went into like seven Wawas and wanted a poster. I went around asking for one of these Hoagie Phillies posters, and nobody would give me one. And I was twenty-two or twenty-three at the time, so it seems a little bit more appropriate than thirty-four right now. But I like went on their website and wrote to Wawa, their HR, and said, you know, hey, I'm, I'm a teacher, you know, I got, the corner of your room is always about personal stuff, and you know, your, your history or your college or whatever, you know, can I get a poster? And they sent me a bunch of posters and a bunch of other stuff, and I just, it's just, you know, again, good customer service shows that, that companies care more than just about their bottom dollar, and, and I think that it, you know, it shows what this company's made of. So the more Wawas down in South Florida, I think the better. That's all.
Phillies haven't won since.
No, 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 no. Sorry. Take one in a lifetime.
So any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, may have a roll call on proposed ordinance number eighteen dash zero one one. Yes?
Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Romulus. Commissioner Casello. Vote is five to zero.
May have a motion for proposed ordinance number eighteen dash zero one two.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Romulus?
Yes.
Commissioner Casello?
Yes.
And Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vote is five to zero.
And may have a motion to table item E, approved Wawa gas station conditional use and major site plan modification. Owe?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion is tabled to the next meeting. Item C, approved dog activity world group conditional use request for a pet care boarding and daycare facility in existing twenty thousand square foot tenant space located in the shops of Woolbright at the northeast corner of Woolbright Road and Southwest Eighth Street within the planned commercial development zoning district. Applicant Hannah Wickens.
I think it's over this way. Okay, you're going to have to just flip it through that way. Good evening.
Evening.
My name. Okay. Sorry, we had a small modification, but we didn't realize, we had to go back and use the original one. So bear with us on this. My name's Hannah Wickens, I'm the founder and CEO of Dog Activity World Group, also known as DOG. And this is Karen Niski. I also have my architect here, Keith Chambers. Do you need us to swear in?
Yes, I do. I was just waiting for you to take a break. Do you swear or affirm that your testimony will be true?
Yes, I do. So just click through all the. But my entire life, I have spent around dogs, whether it's been a Jack Russell puppy, Great Danes, I've, I've trained them my entire life. There's very, very few moments that I haven't had a dog by my side, at school, in my adult life, there, with me every single moment of every day. Keep going through. The, I moved to the United States on my own when I was seventeen. Keep, just clicking. Yeah. I was seventeen years old, and I moved, I, I was raised in England for ten years, moved to Spain. And on my own, I eventually moved here at seventeen, I moved to Detroit and started up my own business after I worked for a while at PricewaterhouseCoopers and Ford Motor Company. And after doing that for seventeen years and traveling back and forth, I moved to Florida in two thousand and nine, and during the time that I was flying back and forth between Florida and Detroit, trying to run my business back and forth, I realized leaving my animals and pets, being a single mom, that there just wasn't any sufficient, really, really good quality facilities that I could leave my animals at, that they weren't coming back either skinny or bug bites or, or things that were constantly going wrong with them. So when I sold my company in Detroit early two thousand seventeen, I just said, you know, forget it, I'm, I'm just going to do this myself. It needs to be, the whole process needs to be revolutionized, and I think that something can be done to exceed the levels of what everybody else is doing. And dogs, we've entered the area of pet humanization right now, and dogs should be cared for at a much higher level. It should be a much more transparent business where people can come in, you get text messages, you get many, many more things than what people are currently offering. So that was where I put all my passion into creating what DOG is also known as. So what, actually, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to exceed your dog's expectations. So by creating this DOG, DOG came about, actually, my father, my father passed away in two thousand and seven, his initials were David Allen Wickens, and then I finally decided to do Dog Activity World, and then I figured if I put a G on the end, that was Dog Activity World Group, but I still incorporated his initials into it. But the premise behind it is, we, we want to exceed your dog's expectations, and by doing that, that's mentally, socially, physically, and emotionally. So it's a full package deal. And when your dogs come through the door of this twenty thousand square foot facility that we have, it's, it's an indoor facility, all air conditioning, it's nonstop activities, unlike traditional dog daycare facilities where dogs typically stand around all day long, they don't get any activities indoors, they might have a splash pool outside, but as soon as the dogs come through here, there's ball pits, there's a hundred and sixty-foot lure runs, there's splash zones, there's frisbees, there's nonstop things going on back and forth. If you want to. Yeah, yeah, you can just keep going on that. So our facility, it is, as I mentioned, it's a twenty thousand square foot indoor facility next to the Home Depot on Woolbright and Ninety-five, and essentially what we are trying to create is a, is a Disney world for dogs. And as such, we are raising the bar. What I love about this facility is that it is all indoors. There's such a prominence right now of having dogs that are getting exposed to sun-induced skin cancer, a lot of the other places around. They have the dogs outside in ninety-four degree heat, they're getting dehydrated, this is all indoors. The dogs, of course, will go outside, use the restroom, that kind of thing, but we're really trying to push keeping your dogs inside, keeping them hydrated, getting them out of the sun, educating people on, putting rash guards on, sunscreen, and all of the elements to keep them safe and indoors. As we all know, a tired dog is a happy dog. When they're tired, there's less behavior issues, they're healthier. And we're, as I said, we, we really want to have nonstop activities for them. We want to have staff onsite twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty days a week. We will have, we'll be open from seven in the morning till seven at night, and all of the staff will go through a pet tech CPR course, so that as soon as the dogs come through the door every day, they'll go through a ninety-second snout-to-tail assessment. So that just means before they even go out into the play area, they'll get their nose, their ears, their gums, their skin checked, their legs checked, so that there's no miscommunication as to whether or not your dog got injured on the property. If there is something wrong with them, our staff will take a look at them before they even go out to play, will bring it to your attention. We want to be the first-class facility in addressing everything that you could possibly need to know about your animal before it even gets out and about playing. Some of the services. It's not going. Oh, okay. Well, we can hold off on that one. Some of the services that, that we're, that we're offering in the facility is daycare, boarding, grooming, training. We'd like to have a valet, drive-through, drop-off, holistic pet food store, zen massage, pet photography, guest speakless come-in monthly, live cameras, a pet boutique, parent bonding area with a hundred and sixty-foot lure run where the dogs can run like in the, in the Greyhound track, which nobody has that. Transportation, drop-off, pickup, instant text updates, as soon as your dog gets fed or gets given its medication, you'll get that communication. We'd like to have birthday parties, bark mitzvahs, yappy hours, vet consulting services.
Will you take humans?
Yes. Yeah, we'll have, we'll have, yeah, we'll have the single, the single gang around, you must love dogs, and even if you don't have a dog, you can come in and like somebody else's dog possibly, so. And one of the other, the, the most amazing thing about the building is that it does have seven-and-a-half inch concrete tilt walls. And one of the things that really reached me last year when we had the hurricanes going through and all of these dogs being tied up to trees. through and all of these dogs being tied up to trees, it made, it made me sick. And the building is such a strong concrete bunker for this. And with the generator and the transfer switch that we have, we could totally make this into a safe shelter and a safe haven for any of these dogs. So people don't have to go and tie their dogs up to trees and just have to flee the state if they don't have a place to be able to go. Because at the, at the capacity for dogs to be able to run around, we could easily have 250 dogs there. But if we're just holding dogs in there with owners, it's easily compatible to have 400 dogs there. There should be no reason why people in a hurricane can't come and sit there with their dogs and not have to feel like they have to tie them to a tree and flee the state. So I'm trying to cut down on some of that, that was going on during those services. Yeah. Okay. There you go. So in our target market, there's plenty of dogs to go around. And as we do know, I mean, there's, there's lots of competition. I, I don't necessarily consider us competition because what we're doing totally exceeds expectations of what everybody else has done. But in the surrounding cities, there's 128,000 or 129,000 dogs that has a potential to come into our facility. And within a five-mile radius, there's about 82,000 dogs. So what we're looking for is a ratio of about one employee for every 10 dogs. Start off with seven employees, hopefully get up to 15 employees. And you know, the, the area that we're in, in Boynton Beach, I've, I live in Boynton Beach. I have four other houses in Boynton Beach. My mother has a house in Boynton Beach. My kids go to school in Boynton Beach. I couldn't think of a better place that I would love to have a business start in Boynton Beach because that's where I've been since 2009. And I just think it's got so much growth coming to it. And it's just, it used to be a supermarket, so it has all these floor drains in it. So everything can be washed down at night with 20,000 square feet of turf in there. And it's just such an ideal location, and I'm just really, really, really excited about it. And it's a whole new concept in, in dog daycare and pet humanization and what we're really trying to do with bringing one-stop-shop service to a huge facility to make it something really, really special for, for all the dog lovers out there to be able to come and enjoy and make something different. Oh, sorry, Karen would like to say something.
And I would just like to add, I'm extra excited, as you saw me clapping, because Wawa is right down the street from us. And I'm a Jersey girl.
Commissioner Casella, would you like to begin?
Just a quick question. Have you set up some type of pay scale on what it would cost to board the dog overnight?
Yes. We're, we're most likely going to be doing a membership basis. And then as far as overnight boarding, we're gonna range those between luxury suites and regular suites. So pricing will probably be anywhere around $60 a night, but that will include two days of daycare. And like I said, the daycare includes nonstop activities unlike any, any other place. So, I mean, and if you have, if you can imagine 170-foot run where your dog can just chase after the squirrel, the remote-controlled squirrel like you can in the Greyhound thing, Run the Rabbit, nobody has that. There's three places in the United States that have something like that.
My dog doesn't like to walk seven feet.
And for the older dogs, I mean, we have, yeah, we have mental stimulation games with the older dogs and, you know, paw painting and, and lots of other things that we'd like to do. Yeah. Three different types of training for, yeah, all that kind of stuff. So it's, it's really a well-rounded catering system for everybody.
Thank you.
Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. I, I'm glad to know that you're doing something with the building out there because it's been empty for a long, long time.
It has.
I was sitting up here trying to figure out where it was until you said Home Depot. And I said, oh, they used to have a grocery store out there.
They did.
Okay, I just want to applaud you on whatever you're doing. It sounds like, you know, hey, humans can go there too. But anyway, you're offering everything except cell phones and TVs. You thought about that?
Yes. We are, yeah, we're doing, we're doing the real-time communication, obviously. I mean, as soon as your dog eats, you'll get a text message. As soon as it goes to the bathroom, you can get a text message and a photo if you like.
That's too much, that's too much, that's too much.
But with, you know, with Gander Outdoors going in next door, I mean, they, you know, it's, we gotta keep it, we gotta keep something. Yeah, we're very excited.
Very well.
The Plaza's coming back, and we're very, very excited about all of it.
Bark mitzvah, your dog.
Exactly. She's turning 13 next year. So I'm very excited. I have a dog. And, you know, I understand traveling, it's, it's hard to find somebody because, you know, it's okay to watch a five-pound Chihuahua, but, you know, a 40-pound Australian Shepherd that needs to be out, and it makes a difference. So appreciate you coming to here. Looking forward to seeing which, your business model.
Thank you. You guys should really, I mean, it's, you have to see it to believe it. You really do. It's massive inside. And one of the things I know that people are very much looking forward to is not having to necessarily get out of their car because we want to have that drive-through service, white glove service, who will come and get the dog from the car for you. So you never, if you're in a rush, you never have to get out. We'll put the dog back in the car for you. We'll get it from the car for you. You can just keep on going on your way.
And then one of the other things we're super excited about is our space allows, like the agility competitions, you can't find 20,000 square feet, air-conditioned, under roof, completely dog-friendly. So we're expecting the dog or the championships for like dog agility and whatnot to come and use our facility from Naples, maybe from up north. People will travel to get to us. So we'll be bringing outsiders into Boynton Beach, which we're really excited about with all the new restaurants.
Could we call another Westminster?
No, we'd love to have some adoptathons and really help out the community, Big Dog Ranch, and, and try and get some more strays off, off the road.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any further comments from the board or questions? Seeing none. Any comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none. May I have a motion to approve?
So move.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Welcome to Boynton Beach.
Thank you.
Our next is proposed ordinance number 18-013. Shawna?
Ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending land development regulations, Chapter 1, Article 2, Definitions, amending Chapter 3, Article 4, Section 3D, Table 3-28, Use Matrix and Notes, Number 44 and Number 45, amending Chapter 3, Article 5, Section 5 and Section 6, to increase provisions for contractors' offices, offices for civic or fraternal organizations, the sale of recreational boats and vehicles, diet and nutrition counseling services, cremation services, truck rental, and the sales of motor vehicles manufactured or assembled on-site, providing for conflict severability codification and an effective date.
He was sworn in.
Yes. Thank you again, Mike Rump, your interim development director. The title that Shawna just read kind of sums up that this is a, this item is, is a collection of different amendments of the definitions, zoning matrix, and the zoning matrix notes, and some land development regulations. We sometimes classify these as cleanup, sometimes an oversimplification, but they are in some regards. Some of them are prompted by recent or past inquiries from individuals wanting to expand or open up businesses in the city. And based upon the zoning district they were in or other restrictions on our code, they were unable to implement or expand their business plan. I'll just touch upon some of these very quickly. If you wish for me to go into further detail on them, I can do that. So as Shawna read that list, I'll somewhat do the same thing.
My question, are these all becoming permitted uses or conditional uses?
Well, some neither, but some permitted. I don't think there's any that really are touch upon a conditional category.
So these will all become permitted uses?
Yes, either directly or clarified.
Okay.
So for example, a contractor's office is a permitted use in the city now, except the definition is unclear. And it implies that it's really the industrial or contractor's shop component of it. And it doesn't accommodate just a contractor's office. We have several in the city now. Several might be in industrial areas. It's questionable whether they can expand. This clarifies the definitions, indicating that there is a contractor's office use and a contractor's shop use.
So for the fact that if we have, this is maybe industrial or a pin, that they can have a bigger office space in association with their other, you know, warehouse space?
That's correct.
Okay. I understand now. Thank you. Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. Cremation services, that is a conditional use?
Well, that might be the one exception, yes.
Thank you, thank you.
And what this does do, this allows, right now, crematory services are only access, allowed accessory to a funeral home or a cemetery. And this allows them as a standalone use because we have had past inquiries. Speaking of animals, we've actually had inquiries regarding crematory services for pets. And that's also being added to the definition to clarify that that's also allowed. Rental of moving trucks, we have had past inquiries. And so this would be allowed as accessory to storage uses for moving companies, shipping and moving companies.
Right, let me ask a question. Truck rental, would that affect anything like the one that's up in District 2, the U-Haul?
It does not change its current non-conforming status in the zoning district.
Okay. Wasn't trying to get them out, but it was a thought I'm just saying.
Diet Nutrition Center is an interesting find in that this is the only office, general office use that's allowed in the office classification or group and our zoning regulations, which is not allowed in the office zoning district, which is C1. So it's a simple change of, of adding diet nutrition center use in the C1 zoning district.
I see.
Probably most significant, it was also mentioned a few moments ago during the last presentation, which involves would benefit our pending operation of the Outdoor World Gander subsidiary that's being, we anticipate to go into the Home Depot Expo Center. Now, this change clarifies that this use category is also allowed to include the sale of camping equipment and recreational vehicles. It also required the change in outdoor storage of such merchandise. So with that, I'll open up for any questions. Or further questions?
I don't have any. All right. Well, we have three, so.
That's the majority.
That's, that's, that's all we need. So may I have a motion?
So move.
All right. May I have a roll call, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Romulus is absent. Commissioner Casella?
Yes. Absent. All right. Do we want to take a recess for them to return? Do we want to?
Yeah, because we're looking pretty bad up there.
All right, let's see what we can accomplish. City managers report. The requested action is to discuss the value of adopting the Palm Beach County Panhandling Ordinance.
Yes, I'm going to invite Assistant Chief Joe DeGiulio and Captain John Bonifere to come up. And so it's been quite a few months, probably at least six months now, we were talking, talking about some of the issues with panhandling in the city. And I know the commission at one point was considering whether or not we wanted to opt into the countywide panhandling or prohibition ordinance. And in conversations with, with Joe and with John, you know, we do have some tools already in the toolbox that this county ordinance aligns with pretty, pretty closely with some Florida statutes. And I asked them to come and share with you. Hopefully, you've noticed a difference or an improvement because I certainly have in their efforts to curb some of that. And they would like to, I'm gonna have them report to you briefly on what we've accomplished and what we recommend to do moving forward.
Just before you start, I'm gonna jump in. I have to call almost twice a week. I'm just saying, we got some that always are out there. They're not out there, it's often now, but I'm just, every time I see one, I pick up the phone and I call. I'm, I'm just saying, hopefully I will, I could stop calling.
Hope so. You will. Actually, I know when we spoke, when we spoke last week, you got a call.
Yep.
So, Joe DeGiulio, Assistant Chief, Police Uniform Services. Just to help you weigh the, whether the value of adopting the county ordinance, we were just gonna go over our current police department strategy, what we do to combat the panhandling. We also want to talk about the county ordinances and how it parallels the current Florida state statutes that we do use. And if you do decide to choose the county ordinance, what are some of the challenges in the future that the, the enforcement perspective that we would actually have to face? So Captain John Bonifere actually did a lot of the, the field work on this. And we were just talking in the back, and he was really excited to share the information with you. He does talk a lot, so we may want to put the clock on him, so. I'm gonna let him, I'm gonna let him go over the information for you.
Thank you, Joe. I appreciate that. Captain John Bonifere, I'm in charge of Special Operations. Really, I really don't mind any more tools in the toolbox, so to speak. I just think that if we're gonna go into this, you have to understand the full spectrum of what we're dealing with. The county ordinance is good. However, there's costs associated with that that you may be unaware. Because it's a city ordinance, if we bring it to trial, not only does the city attorney have to act as the prosecutor in the case, we, the city also has to pay for the defense of the defendant. Obviously, lawyers charging what they will, especially for court cases, it brings the price, the cost of it up. If you have money, I have a lot better things I think I could do with it. But if this is the route you want to go, we'll obviously support it and enforce it. The, we basically, right now, we're using three Florida state statutes. One is very reflective on the county. One, basically, if you walk in the street or walk off the sidewalk, it's a, basically a pedestrian violation. That's real easy for the officers to write. They just identify the subject, write the ticket. If he doesn't show up to court, you know, eventually he's gonna get a warrant for his arrest for failure to pay. The other one that FHP has been utilizing is because the areas typically that commissioners are seeing on top of I-95, those are state-owned properties. So if they're committing one of these offenses, then they issue a trespass warning for these individuals. And that's really good for us because then when we go back, we simply arrest the individual for trespass after warning if he's there again. And obviously, the third one is if someone's walking out, literally blocking traffic, we have the ability to, it's a second-degree misdemeanor, we can arrest them on the spot and send them up. You have to realize that these actions that we take typically are during peak hours of our workday. So you may feel some frustration that you're not getting a quick response or that these individuals are doing that. For the most part, because of our manpower, you know, we're running around handling other calls. One of the things on the county ordinance that I also noticed was the, basically, the no person shall be upon or any road, purpose for distributing materials, goods, or soliciting businesses, or charitable contributions for any time. Now, at this point, we, we allow people to solicit, you know, car washes, I mean, the firefighters pass the boot. It's the hardest day, they work all year, so I don't want to... But beyond that, I don't, I don't want, I don't want to, sorry, chief. I don't, I don't, I don't think, there's some good things that, you know, the community does out there. And I don't, I wouldn't, I would ask that if you are going to adopt a, an ordinance, that we change that to have the licensing incorporated in so they can continue that, do that good work. Do you, ladies and gentlemen, have any questions?
No, my hope, my take is that I just want to get them off of I-95 up there. I'm just saying, because they be like half drunk sometime, but sometime they be whole drunk. And I'm just, it's a problem when I see them. I'm sorry.
No, you're absolutely right. It's the first thing people see when they come into the city, and it's the last thing they see when they leave. I understand your frustration. I've been combating it for years. You know, we're just, you have our promise that we're gonna, you know, put more effort into it. Yes, sir?
If we accept this, adopt this ordinance, if we arrest the individual, they go to court, we have to pay? Did you say we have to pay for their defense also?
Well, we, the city attorney would bill us because they would actually represent us in court. And we do, like the state system, where the public defender represents the defendant, they have the right to counsel, so they would have to. And talking to Mr. Cheroff extensively about it, if he was here, he'd probably have more precise expenditures.
How many people have you actually arrested for panhandling?
My previous technique was to encourage them to go somewhere else. My previous technique was to encourage them to go somewhere else. We haven't arrested anybody for panhandling. We've arrested individuals for misrepresenting their financial status on a piece of cardboard, which is a misdemeanor in the state of Florida. We've done, used some creative means to get them to move on their way. Now, obviously, I would say with confidence, about 100% of the individuals are either substance abusers or alcoholics. And as a consequence, they typically have, we use that as a prerequisite crime to arresting them for something else. We've been pretty, pretty good, but in the last couple of years, you know, with manpower being what it was and the increase for calls of service, we really haven't been paying attention to it as much.
So if somebody called in a panhandler on a certain corner, you don't actually have somebody that's just devoted to handle those calls? You'd have to take somebody off the road or another call to handle the panhandle?
Correct. So then it becomes a matter of prioritizing. And typically, you know, when the sun goes down, they go away. That's when we get freed up and then they're gone. The other thing we've been doing is entering into trespass agreements with local businesses, pretty much all the pharmacies, all the gas stations, all the convenience stores. I think we've entered into over 130-something agreements in the last 16 months in an effort to, so basically, they put up a sign, they're in agreement with us, and we act as agents of the property, and we have the ability to kick them off, to trespass, warn them, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you.
You know, one of the things I did see, I guess, the five o'clock news regarding, and they had someone from the homeless coalition. Are we, are officers partnering with the homeless coalition to get transportation to a homeless shelter or to move them off the streets?
Well, I think it's important to differentiate between the homeless and these individuals. These individuals very rarely want any help. Their primary focus is to get money to support their substance abuse. Obviously, heroin's huge down here. And if you look at the individuals that are usually partaking in this, they're typically suffering from heroin-related type of illness and stuff.
But we do have an interlocal with the Palm Beach County, with the shelter to provide transportation when, if and when we come across some that are willing to go, that we do offer to bring them up there.
Yes, we do have a policy in place. If anybody asks for help, we have pamphlets, we have points of contact. The county's actually really good in supporting that type of thing. And in fact, one of the things that I wanted to show everyone was basically signs. You probably saw something very similar in the sheriff's office jurisdiction saying, you know, there are positive ways to contribute to these individuals. Please don't give money to panhandlers.
So I guess it's also the community to not give them money as well. Yes, Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. If we don't do anything and say, you know, let's keep doing what we're doing, will that affect those individuals that's up on I-95 so I can stop calling?
I promise you, I'll make it my personal mission in life to handle those individuals on top of I-95. We have been doing it. And I would, I would think that you had, probably had seen a decrease.
I have.
You know, overall, we could be doing a better job. And we will endeavor to do so.
And you know, and I don't want anybody to think that I'm against them, but when they go, they leave the place trashy, I'm saying it's dirty, and they talk about plastic bags, everything is up there.
Yes, correct, sir.
I'm good with what's already on the books. I'm just saying if y'all promise that y'all can get rid of them, it's fine with me. I'm one person.
Yes. Thank you for your in-depth research in this and moving forward with making sure that we're having those individuals seek the treatment that they need. Vice Mayor?
I would like to just bring attention to the fact that we have all three of our police chiefs currently in the room. I'd like for them to stand for us to acknowledge their presence, just to thank them for manning our PD these past couple of months as we've been without an actual chief. We had an acting chief, but we also just had all three of these chiefs who serve in their respective capacity. So if you could just stand so everybody in the audience can just see you and just thank you for your work and what you've done. So we have Assistant Chief Vanessa Snow, Assistant Interim Chief, Acting Chief Kelly Harris, and also Chief Joe DeGiulio. So thank you all for everything that you do to make our city safe. And also, we had some great numbers from 2017 showing that we've had the lowest crime rate in our city for the past few years since about 2010, I believe. So thank you for making that a possibility as well. Thank you.
All right. So basically, we're going to move forward with what we've been doing. And thank you, Lori, for looking into this for us.
And let me just go ahead and straighten this out. But Chief Joseph, we know that you all work real hard, okay? Thank you.
Moving on to legal, proposed ordinance number 18-014.
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending land development regulations, Chapter 3 zoning, Article 2 general provisions, to add a new Section 11, municipal operations in emergency facilities, essential services and support infrastructure, to exempt municipal emergency and support facilities, including essential services and infrastructure, from certain building and site standards, providing for conflict, severability, codification, and an effective date.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move. Second?
Is there any discussion from the board? Seeing none. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, nothing wrong with me.
This has been a terrible night.
Five to zero. Thank you.
All right. Next, proposed ordinance number 18-015.
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending Part 2 Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2 Administration by creating a new Article 19 entitled "requirements for the city of Boynton Beach's docked bike-share systems, providing for definitions, codification, conflicts, severability, and an effective date."
All right. May I have a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
Second with discussion.
All right. Do you have any questions or can we have someone from staff to explain?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Rebecca Harvey, a sustainability coordinator. Hi. I have a short presentation this evening. Oh, I do this myself. There we go. I believe that the commission and the mayor and vice mayor are somewhat familiar with bike sharing, but for anyone in the room who's not, I'll just give a quick definition. Bike-share system is an automated system in which bicycles are made available for shared use to individuals via a membership subscription or short-term rental. It's a little bit like Uber, Lyft, these ride-sharing systems, just with bikes. There are two main types of bike sharing. There is what's called a docked system or a station-based bike-share system and a dockless. And this ordinance is specified for a docked system in which users borrow a bike from a docking station, which is basically a glorified bike rack that locks the bikes and releases it with computer-controlled automated system. And they return it at another docking station that is a permanent fixture in the city. Dockless systems, self-locking GPS-enabled bikes that can be parked anywhere because they lock themselves. And this, these are some of the ones that have received quite a bit of attention in the news recently, where bikes and scooters, there's also dockless scooter systems you may have read about in San Francisco and elsewhere, that are left in different places requiring cities to kind of scramble for regulations. Now, we're getting ahead of the game here by starting an ordinance and starting with just the dock-based systems. Bike sharing has many benefits. I won't read them all to you, but it's a new transportation option that can fit into our existing transit and transportation system. We heard from Palm Trans this morning. Great to hear that they're optimizing their routes. Bike sharing can provide a first-mile, last-mile trip solution for people when they're taking Palm Trans, when they're taking Tri-Rail. It will augment the pedestrian-friendly downtown that we are creating. It can provide amenities for visitors. It can also make riding safer by getting more bikers out there on the road and increasing the visibility of cyclists. And promotes active lifestyles, among other benefits. This program will fit our climate action plan. There's the initiative T6 in our existing climate action plan. And it also fits the strategic initiative in our strategic plan of transportation and mobility connecting the community through safe, accessible, and multimodal systems. This is where we're at as of 2017 in the U.S., with 100 bike-share systems, eight major companies, and only 4% of trips were on dockless bikes. Most are still on these permanent docked-based systems. And in Palm Beach County currently, there's only one city, West Palm Beach, that has skybike, bike sharing. So Boynton Beach, if we do approve and move forward with this ordinance and with an agreement, we would be the second city in the county. And other neighbors are also planning. So the ordinance, just to highlight a few of the main clauses, as I said, it's, at this point, for a docked system, only if the operator wanted to use the bikes on a dockless basis that would require administrative review. The ordinance is for non-exclusive agreements. The operator is responsible for all costs. The operator must promote safety laws and use of helmets. And locations must be jointly determined by the city and the operator and must be approved by the city. The ordinance stipulates that agreements must have a maximum fleet size to avoid oversaturation of the market with bikes. And it also states, sets a performance bond for the operator. And that's the end of my report. I open it up for any questions.
Any questions?
Yes, my question that I asked the city manager, were you able to relay that to?
Yes, I got to, yeah, talk to Rebecca a little bit.
And can you provide a response to?
Yeah, I think, well, we were talking about the, you know, the non-exclusivity. I did reach out to West Palm, right? They did something a little bit different. They only have the bike-share program offered in their downtown core, which is within the boundaries of their downtown development authority. They, as a city, were not inclined to want to go the exclusive franchise route. So they ended up, I guess their DDA contracted with this one vendor, and the city subsequently, you know, has an agreement with the DDA to allow them to do that. So it's a little bit different. They are struggling now with how to handle the rest of the city. They're trying to figure that out. The program has been successful there in their downtown area. I was talking to the manager a little bit about, you know, we both agree, we think the market can control the number of bike shares if we don't go the exclusivity route. I didn't get a chance to really talk to Shawna, and this is something I think we could vet out between this reading and the next reading, is the challenges with a franchise or exclusivity versus allowing it open to the free market. So Rebecca, can you talk a little bit, you mentioned about the fleet control of how many that you can have or that the company can have so we don't end up with?
Yeah, again, these are permanent stations with fixed numbers of slots. It's not like the dockless kind of nightmares that we've heard about where the companies are just putting more and more bikes out on the street that end up being everywhere and a real problem for the city. And we, in the current version of the ordinance, we have, we just have a clause about fleet size. Operators shall state the desired maximum fleet size in the agreement. City and operator may agree to add additional bikes and/or stations if it is determined and mutually agreed that there are not enough bicycles or locations to meet demand. The city shall have the authority to limit an operator's fleet size with reasonable discretion to protect the safety of the traveling public and integrity of the bike-share system itself and entire transportation system within the public way. So that will alleviate some of the risk, I believe, of having too many bikes. Also, the performance bond and the whole purpose of this ordinance, as I said, I believe many cities don't get ahead of the curve with regulating to begin with and then are scrambling to regulate them once they're already overcrowded. So we are getting ahead of the curve. And the purpose of all of this is to prevent any fly-by-night companies coming in that might not have the business practices that we would want in our city.
Mayor?
I commend you for getting ahead. I believe my concern that I expressed to the city manager was what's the process of who or what vendor we decide to work with? So would it basically be a situation where we go out to RFP and then different vendors submit or bid and then we choose them and that's our sole vendor? That's, I don't necessarily mean that we have to create an exclusivity clause, but how do we prevent where we have multiple different vendors with multiple different docks, with multiple different access points in the city, and it's just a hot mess? That's my question.
Colin Groff, Assistant City Manager. We did look at that. The two ways to do it, one is, is we're going to follow the same process we use for the PACE program, where you come in, you have to meet all the requirements of it. So you'll apply to the city, and we have to work that. We're working on that right now, what that kind of application is. So when they come in, they're all going to be standard meeting that, the standards that are in the ordinance. So that helps with one way, with not having all kinds of different things out there. The second part is the city has to approve every location. Once there's no more locations to put these docked systems, there won't be any more companies approved because there won't be any place for them to go. The market's only going to support so much. The exclusivity that I have with it is, who do you pick? Do you, is it by, you know, do you just go pick one, you pick another? Do you do a franchise agreement? There's another way to do it. There's a lot more work in that. This way, we let the market come to us. They say, we would like to do it. Where would you like to do it? We ask those questions. If those spots are underserved and needed, then you let them do it. If they're already there and it's already being done, then we say, no, we don't need you. So that's the process. We are going to have to work that out, the actual procedural details. We're going to be working on that. This needs two readings, and then we'll need to go through. The last part of it is, is those agreements will come back. Once staff reviews them and has them, the agreements will come back to the commission for approval. So you'll have the final say is, do you like these locations? No or yes, or do you want another person? If we go to exclusivity, the question is, how do you select that if it's just an exclusive? It's tough for cities to do that without some kind of larger process where you're picking who's the best, who's this, who's that. So I'd rather just, our preference is to keep it open and let the market come to us if they're ready to do this. We don't think there's going to be that many in this range. We also limited it to the certain types. We're not opening it up to a lot of motorized vehicles right now. Because that's where the mess comes. The motorized scooters and all that is really where it creates problems. So we think we've controlled that. Again, we can always come back after we get this one in and we start getting, if we get a bunch of applications all at once, we'll come back to you and say, we need to fix this. Very similar to the PACE program that we set up, if you remember that. This is how we've set up the PACE program, where if a company wants to do that program, they come to us, they apply. If they meet all the qualifications, we can approve them. And then it comes back to you for an approval of the agreement. So we're set up under that same model. I think I, I hope I answered your question. Almost. No, I'm trying.
I think we think the market and then the regulations are going to control not letting it get to be, you know, a hot mess or have, you know, if we're approving the locations and again, if somebody's already there and there's only so many places they're going to want to put these things, you know, they can't take up parking spots in private parking lots. That's one of the reasons we also want to control locations.
Space is going to be limited.
Yeah. And all I'm striving for is uniformity. I believe, not exclusivity, but uniformity. I would prefer to see that if we have a company that's serving our downtown, that's all the same company that you would return your bike to if you decided to go to our mall. It's also the same company that you would decide to go to.
Absolutely.
If you go to our Palm Trans station. So that's what I'm looking for. I just don't want where we have one company in downtown, one company on Congress, one other company on Gateway. I feel like that's what the ordinance is proposing, and I'm not sure if that's lost on me in translation.
That's not the intent of the ordinance.
It would prevent that, then, you're saying? Or you would clean that up by the second reading? Is that what you're saying?
No, but I think, you know, if a company's going to come in, if they're going to, they're going to have multiple locations. I think it's whoever, it's a first come, first served. So the first company that's come in, perhaps it's Sky Ride or whatever that group is, they're going to want that convenience to be able to have multiple docking stations throughout the city. So if someone is going that wants to take a ride from the mall to the beach, they're going to come in and they're going to have docking stations at the mall and the beach. So their customers will not have to trek all the way back to drop it off. So I think, I think the market, again, will control that. They're going to get in and they're going to get the sites, probably the premium sites that are going to be out there, whoever gets in the door first. And, you know, I think it's going to control itself that way.
Right. There is limited sites that you can do this at. So we'll have the first company come in, they'll pick all the sites that have the market right now. But as people start using it, they may choose But as people start using it, they may choose, okay, we're, we're at the maximum size we want to be and we still have sites needing to be served. You're right. The problem is, is you need to be able to be at all locations that's serving. But there are different zones within a city that, like if you're at the hospital and you want to go to doctor's offices around the hospital, maybe there's a couple centers, that's a zone that the company will want all their spaces. At the mall and Renaissance and all that, that's a different zone. Most likely, people aren't going to ride 10 miles or 15 miles with this bike. This is an intermittent, an intermodal system where you take the bus and then you can get this bike and go. So I think the market will drive that. If you ask me, is there a potential that you could have, you know, 15 companies trying to do this? The ordinance is written so you could, but it, the only way that's going to work is if the market drives 15 companies. And I don't, that's not going to happen, not in the next 10 years. That's not going to happen. So there's just not that many places to go.
Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. Before we get to second reading, there's a lot of things that we need to work out.
Absolutely.
Okay. We're all on the same page because I'm just saying, my take is that we all need to be on one page and we're not getting there right now.
Okay. My question is regarding, are we, as a city, charging for these bike services to be on city property?
That would be something, a policy that you could decide. We, our recommendation is not right now, no, because we want to encourage it. It's something, again, it's like a lot of things we do. This is, we're kind of in the first, we're kind of out in front trying to do this. I do think that if there is a drive in the market to put more of these in there, then the fee goes in. That's also part of the agreement that we'll sign with them. We'll put some language in there that allows us to change that agreement during certain timeframes because at some point, there could be a revenue stream for the city. It's, again, it's not something that's going to happen right now, it's too new.
Correct. There's no market for it right now. And so we'd like to grow the market for the docked bikes. You know, what I see forward is, is that we need to charge something for the use of city property, whether it be a dollar, $10 per site, so that when we sign a contract for them to be on city property, you know, we have something that says, okay, well, after two years or three years or 10 years, we need to reevaluate because, you know, those, all those sites may be very valuable and another company would want to bid on those sites.
If that's the direction of the board, we can certainly build that in. It's a great, actually, it's a good idea. It's with a timeframe that you have to negotiate and if there's people bidding, we bid the sites.
Because I think that's what we do with certain exclusivity with our towing companies. It's every three years.
Exactly.
And so that's kind of what.
We can, we can use that similar model if that's the direction of the board.
And so I don't know if that's what's in our ordinance right now, but.
No, that's something that can be added though. If that's the direction of the board, again, we all tell us.
So I'll ask the board, does, you know, right now, we're asking for, we have no non-exclusivity. And so I think that's very important to increase the market for this. But I kind of want to have it so that we reevaluate any of our sites on a, I guess, three-year basis so that we know exactly what we're dealing with and that we don't have some bike share monopolize the city of Boynton Beach and it not be the same bike share as other places that, you know, they may have different ones in Lake Worth or Del Ray. And we want to at least have one station there of their bike share so that there could be the co-mingling of bikes between cities.
No, I think we can definitely add that language again. That's.
Okay. I see a couple of not heads.
Yes, I would agree, agree with that. I would just ask that you speak to the bike share programs that are out there to see what their timeframe, relative timeframe that they like to initiate contracts with. That way we can fall within that range because maybe two years is too little or three years is too little.
Yeah, we'll talk to, well, the one that came to us, which is Skybike. Sorry, couldn't remember their name. Look at that. And we've also, you know, we've looked at other cities that have these programs outside of Florida, looking at how they wrote those. So we'll do, we'll do some more research with those cities and look at how they're doing some of those too and try to incorporate some of their ideas that have had it for a few years and been experimenting. So, you know, we're, we're first in this area, but we're not first in the country. So.
Okay. And so I guess having a little bit more terms or the bullet points, you know, exactly where we are.
That's why we're here, to get your input.
Okay. But yeah, is everybody for the bike shares and having a certain term moving forward? All right. So may I have a motion to, do we already do a motion?
Yes. Yes, we did.
You did a one? All right. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Aye.
Propose ordinance number 18 dash 016.
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending Part III Land Development Regulations, Chapter III Zoning, Article V Supplemental Regulations, Section 12 Satellite Earth Stations and Antennas of the City of Boynton Beach Code of Ordinances to provide for the renaming of the section to be Amateur Radio and Television Antennas, to provide for revisions related to the regulations related to the placement of amateur radio and television antennas, providing for city commission authority, codification, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
May I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Saying none, any discussion from the audience? Saying none. May I have a roll call, please? Yes.
Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Romulus?
Aye.
Commissioner Casella?
Yes.
Vote is five to zero.
Propose ordinance number 18 dash 017.
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending Part III Land Development Regulations, Chapter III Zoning, Article V Supplemental Regulations, Section 13 Wireless Communication Facilities of the City of Boynton Beach Code of Ordinances to provide for revisions related to the exclusion of regulations related to the placement of wireless communication facilities in the public rights of way, providing for city commission authority, codification, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
All right. May I have a motion to approve? Any discussion from the board? The only thing I'd like to say is that the second reading be in our second meeting in July to give opportunity for our attorneys to work with the certain telecoms attorneys, as I have received a few emails regarding that and.
Um, yes. Assistant City Attorney David Tolssis is already in communication with all of those individuals who submitted letters and communications tests today.
Yeah. And so I think just having that extra time so we're not overworking our attorneys who are otherwise are on vacation.
Oh.
Yeah. All right. Saying no further discussion, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Absent.
Vice Mayor Romulus?
Yes.
Commissioner Casella?
Yes.
And Mayor Grant?
Yes. Moving on to item E, approved proposed settlement and authorized payment of $200,000 to settle the case of Gail Jenkins and Leon Jenkins versus City Boynton Beach versus Mortgage Electronic Registration Systems with the additional terms set forth below. Shawna, is this, or because this is an ongoing case, is what we said up in our shade section, confidential?
Yes, it cannot be discussed here at this meeting.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
All right. All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
All right. Well.
And we heard one a, one nay.
I heard one a. Commissioner McCray, regarding the Leon Jenkins items, you are back in time to make a vote?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes four to one. Propose ordinance number 18 dash 009, second reading, public hearing, approve ordinance amending Chapter 15, Article 8 Chronic Nuisance Property Code to clarify certain sections. May I have?
Second.
All right. Michael or, I'm sorry, Mark, would you mind explaining what we changed so that it's better for the future?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. Mark Woods, Director of Community Standards. As we said to you at our last meeting, that this was just a cleanup ordinance. It basically just changed some definitions and to make it more consistent with some of the things that were in the ordinance. More specifically, it, it changed some of the definitions where in different parts of the ordinance, it called for the words action. Some places it called for an agreement, some places it said plan. It was made more consistent throughout the ordinance to say, call it now a corrective action plan. And that's consistent throughout the entire ordinance. Also, for a, the pattern of nuisance activity, in some portions of the ordinance, it required three or more nuisance activities. It was made to be more consistent to include, it's, it's three or more in some parts, two or more in other parts, but also includes fire and EMS services as well as other city staff, instead of isolating it just to police as it was in the, in the previous version of the ordinance. And lastly, it talked about separate occurrences being per day. And we, in meeting with the review team, we've, we realized that those separate occurrences needed to be per instance and that was also changed as well.
So you're saying that sometimes we got multiple instances per day?
Absolutely. We've, we've seen that quite often now with reviewing some of the data.
Okay. Excellent. Well, thank you for your work with us. I know that we have this implemented and look forward to help removing these chronic nuisances from the city. Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. Mr. Woods, in regards to, I don't know if this is going to address this, but the property that I've been calling you all about and been getting complaints about, the corner of Fifth and the corner of Sixth, is that considered a chronic nuisance? I'm just saying.
Specifically speaking, we don't want to really say in a public forum what, what properties we're looking at because it's mostly criminal activities that's driving these. However, I will say that if we look at the data on a monthly basis, we meet the second Friday of every month and we look at the, the data reports from police and fire as just calls for service, and if that rises to that level, we'll deal with it as a chronic nuisance.
And the police department is actively looking at those properties, Commissioner? Yeah.
All right. We have a motion, first and second. May I have a roll call, or any discussion from the audience? Yes.
Susan O'Air, 140th, southeast 27th way. I don't think a week goes by I don't contact him. So what is this going to do about the problem in my neighborhood where we had 15 calls in two weeks and nothing happened? And it finally ended up being a lean put on that house by animal control because they consistently abuse their dogs.
Again, without speaking specifically to any property in the city, I will say that the chronic nuisance activity is based on criminal activity and it has to rise to that level. The calls for service is not necessarily the determinant. It has to be calls for service where there are actionary items taking place at that property. So if it doesn't rise to that level, then it doesn't rise to that level.
So noise doesn't count?
Noise, to, to an extent, noise would be one of the criteria for us to get there, but it has to be identifiable and verified as a, as a noise violation where, where they were actually cited and brought into, to, just given a citation for it.
But, but noise is not one of the very, the ordinance very specifically lists the criminal activities by which this is measured and noise isn't one of them.
It wasn't one of the ones.
No. So take a look at the ordinance and you'll see, but it's not code enforcement, community standard type stuff. It's, it's right now. This is, this is new. And it, it's city struggle with the, being able to be successful on some of the stuff. So we're starting out right now with just specifically probably 20 to 25 criminal activities that are listed.
Okay. And I, does that mean the ones that occur, the house across or on my street don't qualify? I mean, it's, since that kid's in jail now, we're not having problems, but he will be out of jail at some point.
And I think it depends on the.
I don't know if we can answer regarding any specific instances or active investigations.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
All right. All right. Now we have Commissioner Casella and then Commissioner McCray.
So Mr. Woods, if, if somebody was called to a residence 15 times for noise, that'd be more of a police issue than a, this type of art?
Yes.
Or just artists wouldn't cover that, basically?
Correct.
Unless there was some kind of criminal activity involved.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Can I just get a police official, one of the chiefs down here? Because I'd like to know what happens when we send somebody to a residence 15 times for the same issue.
Good evening, Commissioner, acting chief Kelly Harris. Basically, as Mr. Woods had already alluded to, if in fact, we get to the residence and there is not a violation that is occurring, just because it's called in and when we get there and it's not occurring, then, then we have nothing to, there is no police action.
So if you went to same residence seven, eight times in the course of the night, there'd be, and there was no noise going on when you got there, no action would be taken?
Once we get there and if there's no violation of the noise ordinance, we have decibel readers that we would bring to the residence to determine the, the noise level at that residence. And if it doesn't exceed the set decibel level, then no, there would be no action taken by police.
So eyewitness accounts wouldn't hold much?
No, they would hold, no, no, no.
Okay. Thank you.
But that's not to say we don't talk to the, the party, the party hosts and say, hey, we're getting, you know, we've been out here five, seven times tonight, we're getting a lot of calls, you guys need to ramp it down.
Do you ever say, if we come back, if we come back one more time, someone's going to get locked up? Has that ever been said at those kind of calls?
No, you can't say that.
No, we can't say that.
I was, I was told that a few times at a couple of my parties. It was very effective.
That must have been one hell of a party.
All right. Commissioner McCray, then we have someone from the audience.
Yeah, I just want to say, the property that I was talking about, it wasn't criminal activity. The property I'm talking about is, I keep calling about, the lot, lot is not being moved.
Correct.
Yeah, that's okay. We'll discuss that later. Okay, I just want to clarify. Me, okay. I'm good.
All right. Yes, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Kristy Ward, 101 Minor Road in Boynton Beach, Florida. My question is, when it is like a course of calls being over and over again and the police come out and then they come out and it takes about 15 to 20 minutes before they arrive on the scene and it's going on and people are parking in trespassing on your yard, you have people smoking reefer, you have alcoholic beverages being sold out of the home and you're advising them of this. Plus, in my area where I am, there has been shootings where they found shell casings in my yard as well as, close to my yard, as well as a stabbing like two weeks prior to that. And this has like been an ongoing situation. So this is, my question is, is like at, to what point? Because it starts with noise and then it, it seems to elevate from there. And then when I'm calling, it's like the time for arrival for the police department to get there gets longer and longer or not at all.
And could you give me the question again?
It's, the, the question is, is that what are we doing about it, when they're in the residential neighborhoods, not just the, the businesses? How are we, can we affect, you know, these good neighbors to, you know, these neighbors to be good neighbors?
The, the chronic nuisance ordinance is citywide. We generally look at commercial properties because that's usually how it works for those types of violations, but it's a citywide ordinance. So it's not exclusive to commercial properties. So it would be applicable if those things happened, if there were violations or arrests made for those violations that, that reached the, the level as outlined in the ordinance.
And, and part of this ordinance is, is that it doesn't necessarily stop them from happening. I believe what it does is that we try to set a, a contract with them to abate some of -to abate some of these nuisances. If they fail the contract or do not sign one, we will, the matter will go to our magistrate regarding the amount of services that are used for this property. The magistrate, based upon evidence that our city staff gives, whether it be police or fire, or community standards, will then determine amount of money that these, these property owners would owe, based upon the amount of excess services they are requiring from the city. After that, then it goes on non-ad valorem taxes, and if they fail to pay the non-ad valorem taxes, then the property will be sold at a tax deed auction within about three years. So this isn't an ordinance that's going to be able to say, things are going to stop immediately. This is a long process, and we are finding out today that even though we started it last year, we're still fixing a lot of the bugs, because these properties have been going on for more than, you know, since 2017, and we're in the process of making them better as fast as we can. However, we don't, we're not overstepping someone's property rights or due process rights in order to make it so that the, as, you know, violating any constitutional laws, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
Yes.
Excuse me. Mrs. Ward, the question that you asked, you need to meet with Mr. Woods and acting chief 101, and they can clarify what you said, because he's not answering what you said. I understood what you were saying. And they're not, this is not answering that from here, so you need to meet with those two.
Yeah.
Yeah, after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay. Is there any further discussion from the audience? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner McCray?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Romulus?
Yes.
Commissioner Casello?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yep.
Vote is five to zero.
All right. Regarding discussion of the trolley service, I was willing, wondering if that we could have it on an agenda item next month regarding a request for information. I was informed that there are certain grant applications that we can apply for F dot, that they require a matching amount from the city. And so I'd like to see if we can't start partnering with a provider and getting some information or options available. One of the things that I was saying is that I did not want it to be a free trolley from the mall to the beach, but because we, you know, our beach is paid, you know, it pays, people pay to be on our beach. However, a smaller fee than what we, the $10 that we charge may be advantageous. Instead of having one person drive one car, we could have more people drive the, take the bus to the beach, and therefore have more families at the beach who take up more space, where you have more people in the car.
Want me to put on July 3, or 17?
July 3, if you guys can make it.
Okay.
I won't be here for that meeting, just FYI.
Do you have any input before we go?
Um, I'd be lacking details. No, I'm an open-minded.
Okay.
My take is, Laura, before, when y'all bring it back to us, just, we had the trolley before, and I don't know why we stopped it, but I'm just saying, but come back with information why we stopped the trolley before, so that those who are sitting up here now will understand why it was taken out of service before. I'm just saying, if it was a financial hardship on the city, no, we need to know this information, because we was paying for it before.
Yep.
Yeah, and you know what? Maybe actually, Mayor, the 17th might be a little bit easier on staff, because that was, I need to collaborate with the CRA, because our whole trolley system before was CRA. I know I've talked to Twee and Mike, and they're taking a look at available grants out there. I don't know if they're aware of this one, so perhaps I can get with you on the FDOT one. But I know Twee's actively looking at grant possibilities out there. So I'm going to ask for a little bit of time.
Okay.
If we can do it on July 17, or July 17, that'd be-
Yeah, that sounds great, then.
Yep, and we'll have all that for you.
All right. Anything further from the board? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second.
Means adjourn.